Good morning. All meetings ordered. Uh, we have a quorum taking motion to approve the agenda in a minute, please.
So move second.
Motion second, all favor I?
I.
I propose motion carry. Uh, Rich Brown, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
How you doing today?
Good, um, just a couple of updates on, uh, the guys are Heartland's paving south of Manly, probably will get that paved today, at least the asphalt down. They'll be waiting on some painting and some, I don't think any rubble strips, but they'll be painting there then. Um, Fertile is probably a couple, three weeks out, four weeks out yet, they've got some other projects to go to, so that'll be kind of later on. Um, then the guys are gonna start doing some patching on one oh five here. Um, today, get kind of acclimated to the process and then they're gonna work from the east and come into town. So they got a smaller patch to try to get organized on and then as they get more practice patching, they'll be a little bit faster, trying to get the bigger ones here toward the end. So gonna try to hit that. Um, one thing on the agenda we have that I wanted to discuss was, uh, private tile running parallel in the ditches. And what the board's thought is on allowing that. We seem to get, get from time to time, we seem to get a lot of requests for, and in some instances, some people will wanna go around a tree line or a grove to get in the ditch to go around versus going through the trees because of roots and whatnot. But I had a request, um, from, from somebody this last week wanting to run, uh, you know, maybe a quarter mile down into the ditch. Maybe not quarter mile, but I can't remember what the length was, but a fair amount of distance in the ditch. And after doing some research on whether counties may or may not do, some allow it, some don't allow it. Um, some that do allow it will call that, will call that, uh, tile a utility. And they'll issue a utility permit. And what that basically says is, hey, you can put this tile in the right of way, but you're responsible for all the maintenance. And if we have a problem with the roadway and we do some regrading, you're moving it at your expense. And it basically is the same as any other cable or electrical line that's buried. But the actual, the actual, uh, determination of whether we do it becomes from the board. Um, depends on how, because if we, if we allow one to start putting, putting thousands of feet of, of tile in a ditch, we're gonna get more, more requests after that. Because our ditches are lower, it's less digging, but.
How would that affect Rich if a guy wants, you know, needs a crossing? I mean, are you gonna start calling those public utilities too then?
Perpendicular crossings are different than parallel runs along the ditch.
Okay.
So they're basically running the ditch just to get, you know, to avoid going through somebody else's field and whatnot. Where crossing is the actual roadway, is the, the block area, the roadway is kind of the dam. You gotta get them through the roadway to get downstream, but this is a, these are requests for people running parallel to ditches. So they're not in somebody else's field or they're trying not to get, not, not to have to have permission to go through somebody else's property. The, the, the maybe one of the, kind of the issues is if you're going to run in the roadway right of way ditch and you're not gonna go through somebody else's field yet. The way roadway easements are set up, that landowner still owns the center of the road, they don't pay taxes on it. So then there's that whole thing of, you know, is this tile for a roadway purpose, things like that. So, you know, we do have the authority to, to issue and allow utilities in right of way. But it depends on how you guys wanted to find that. So I just thought I'd bring it, bring it up.
I think that sounds like a good plan to utilities, but what are you gonna do with all the ones that are there now? Just grab all their men?
Well, a lot of the parallel ones that, we have, we don't have a lot that were put in, a lot of them were temporary fifty foot runs and, and they're knowing that. But now we're getting requests for longer runs and.
Okay.
And, and it's more of, uh, you know, they're trying to get, you know, obviously trying to get better outlets to, to, uh, drink in the ditches and whatnot, but, um, so I guess it's up to you guys how you wanna handle that. Um, everybody that's got, you know, from years past, and this is before my time, anything that ran parallel. Um, those landowners already know, we already know, we don't, if there's a parallel line that's existing, we don't maintain it, we don't do anything with it. But I just wanted a better way to handle, if we are gonna allow it, a better source of record to know what we're gonna do with those if we allow to put them in.
Yeah.
No questions later on about, you know, well, you guys let us put it in here, while it's not our, gonna be our responsibility, or at least the county's responsibility to maintain it.
Okay, right, yeah, I, I would agree, if the guys put it in, they should, they should have to maintain it.
I'm just gonna tell you, it's gonna open a whole lot of can of worms, you know, once we start making this a thing, I think anyway.
Could be more requests, you mean, or what?
I think so, I think there're gonna be more requests and then, of course, they've gotta mess with utilities. You know, whether there's fiber optic at the fence line, they're have to worry about crossing through those to get parallel. I always would like to see them run it if they wanna run it that close to ditch, just running on the fence line. But, you know, sometimes they have issues with getting through private property.
How does this, how does it work right now where you have open drainage ditches in some areas like that to run parallel with the road?
Well, I don't know what kind of it, well, uh, usually a, a open ditch running parallel is not necessarily in the right of way. Some of them are, but we don't, uh, usually they're in a drainage district. Um, we do have, we do have open water that runs parallel and those are just ditches of natural flow versus taking a tile, a sub, a subterranean tile and running it versus, uh, open ditch. I think, I'm trying to remember if that tile, I'm not gonna say because I might have my mind confused or, uh, I might be confused with another project in Mitchell County, so.
Well, there's a lot of tile I know that are, are parallel the road in the shoulder, it's like that one we fixed out here on one oh five near Thresh Avenue, here about five years.
And that one is a, that's a roadway subdrain. So back when they built that highway, the state did, they put a lot of sub drains along the road to drain the sub bases. And that's what I think that tile was, and sometimes they do get, they do get, uh, outletted into the ditch or they'll get outletted into a stream, or I don't know if they outlet very many of them into any private tile.
We, we never knew where the same one outletted, they just busted, you know, right down the shoulder of the road.
I thought it was a roadway tile because it was right up on the shoulder and that's typically where a, a subdrain is put in when they pave a road.
Well, and then I know there's a couple county mains, basically out here on, uh, the airport blacked up, up north. There's two, there's two ten inches that they pretty much run right in the road, one runs underneath the shoulder of the road. Another one I think runs in a road ditch up there ways.
Which. This is tile, so the district is responsible for them.
Okay.
I suppose, right?
But I, I have no problem with making a utility, uh, getting the permit.
I wouldn't either.
This, yeah, this way if any other utility companies come strolling through there and put fiber in or put something in, and they hit that guy's tile, then.
Then they have to pay.
Yeah, they gotta, you know, if they, if they know fiber's coming through, they better go and talk to the fiber guys and say, hey, we got tile on this ditch for the next thousand feet.
Yeah.
Uh, they have, okay, if they're on their own, you know, kinda inform those guys, I know they won't be on the one call list, but.
Right, right.
Uh, they need to work around those utility guys too, uh, just the same as, as anybody else, you know, gotta be around their utilities, so.
Could they be put on the, on that list, I mean, as far as before there was a one call, they would have to check the tile too then?
I don't.
Listed somewhere or another?
Can you repeat that, Mark?
Would there be, I mean, would there be a way that they'd have to be on the one call list if somebody wanted to do work in that area, like a public utility, you know? I mean, we're gonna have to keep records of these somewhere or another, even if the guys put them in privately, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know how, how their system, I don't think their system is, is set up to, um, when somebody does a one call that, you know, in that area, I don't know how their system is set up to contact, you know, they've got their, their, uh, utility. When you, when you do a one call, they know that the normal utilities that are in that area. But I don't think they're gonna have a list of any private landowners on that list to, to locate tile. Uh,
I don't know.
When, when those, uh, our, our, uh, our new permit does tell us, tell them though, that they need to lo, to land, to, to contact every landowner for tile. So.
For crossing.
Respect, anybody that's doing work in that right of way is gonna have to find out who that landowner is on a private side versus, uh, utility side. So, I guess we have that component of permit.
I have a one call is pretty well set up for utility companies only because they're the ones that pay the bill.
Right.
They, they pay, every call that comes through, they pay for that to secure their services, they don't get dug up, so.
Okay.
Um, I don't think they'd allow private people in, it'd just be like any other private tile.
Right.
Anywhere else, so.
Okay. Okay.
But yeah, if they wanna do a utility agreement, then it's their baby.
Something we just need to get on the agenda then and make it a, something, a motion or a.
Resolution maybe.
Resolution or a.
Yeah. Make a resolution.
I guess we never, we're just gonna talk about it, so yeah, we could always just set something up for next week and you guys can make something official if you want, I guess.
Probably should.
Yeah, just start for next week, you know, two weeks from now, get it, get it drawn up the way you want it and we'll look it over and go for it.
Yep. So, okay, um. Also then, we have, uh, um, a request for a ditch clean from Barts, um, up in Barton.
Yeah.
Thank.
Do you know more about that, Ken?
Yeah, he called me the day we met out there last Friday and said that, uh, Elliot gave him a price of about five thousand dollars. And I said, just go ahead and get a, get a hold of Russ and get a work permit for it.
Yeah, for twelve hundred feet, and I guess the question that we have is, should there be looking at the whole ditch and not just a, a middle section of that ditch?
Probably, but.
Probably, but if it just, if that's what they wanna get done, you can look at it later. I mean, there's other stuff that can be happened later, could be some slubs and stuff, just simple, get it taken care of. If the district wants to go further, you know, you can't like mech, micromanage all these farmers out here to what they wanna do and things like that. They kinda know what needs to be done, they look at it and get it done.
That's fine, you guys are the, you guys are the trustees of the district, we just thought that, you know, if there's, uh, a total of, you know, nine thousand feet of ditch and we're gonna clean in the middle, should they look at the downstream side? Or is that cleaning gonna just silt back in if the downstream is not cleaned up, so? And I, we haven't looked at it and I don't know what it is, I just, Russ had given me this because he had said, you got a conversation, Ken, with the, the landowner, so.
Also makes me wonder too, do they need to go all the way to the outlet so it continues to move?
Well, I could probably, uh.
But now you're looking at twelve hundred feet, or you're looking at nine thousand feet versus twelve hundred and that changes the cost. It's maintenance, but it's still gonna cost money.
Right, I understand, basically, you know what, the farmers are paying the bill, it's not the county.
Right.
The landowners, the landowners are, huh?
But he's questioning the code, is what we're questioning, you know, there's, there's a request to claim, you know, should the whole thing be looked at? And he's, you know, that's probably true, but I, I don't know the situation out there that well, I mean.
Okay, I'll get, I'll take, it's gonna happen till fall anyway, cause Elliot said he couldn't get there till fall, I'll go over and take a look at it.
Okay.
The, the quote was about four dollars a foot
Yeah.
to clean and then, so if you take that out to nine thousand feet, that's obviously, that's gonna be thirty six thousand dollars versus nine, versus the twelve or whatever that.
That'll be under fifty thousand.
Right, so, I mean, that's your decision you guys wanna make, we've got a work order put up for.
Yeah, then, then besides that, if you got that many feet, could be, you could drop the price down, either that or then we'll get a second quote.
There might not be as much to dip, you know, all the rest of it, so.
Right, well, yeah, but what do you guys wanna do then?
Just hang, just hang tight out of them, we'll get them and we'll, for rewarded, huh?
All right, well, just hang on to it for now.
Okay.
All right, I don't have anything else, you guys want any questions or have anything to discuss?
No, just, uh, I, I sent Mike a thank you, I really appreciate them getting over and cutting those trees off for that area there, they were pretty bad, so. And I know he's gonna be in the area, you said, doing a bunch more, so I appreciate that.
Yep, he hit it pretty good that day, so.
Yeah, he did, did a nice job.
Yeah, looks good.
One more thing, Rich.
Yep.
On the, on the corner out here at Vine.
Yep.
You know, like, still into that pipe, let's get in it, is there possible you could cut that pipe like at a forty-five or sixty and then lay a, kind of a grate that way over it?
I'm trying, I'm looking at the numbers now because looking at all the elevations that we've got, we're gonna have some pretty tight clearances. If we, if we bring that tile from the, the south inlet across, you know, when we were standing out there, I said, well, why don't we bowl this whole thing out? Well, the reason we can't bowl it out is because that main runs to the, to the southeast and they've got cover over that. So we don't wanna expose too much of the side of that, of that main that runs to southeast right next to the bridge. So that's probably why that hump is the way it is, we can probably shave some of that dirt out of there and then we can, we can obviously armor that pipe with some, some rip rap or whatever. Um, but right now I'm looking to make sure we have the clearance, if we wanna run that pipe across, um, make sure we have clearance over that pipe. Um, that's the other thing too, when I was looking at the outlet of that ditch underwater, that culvert under one oh five, that'll give us, if we, if we, if we, uh, swale that culvert, we're gonna really be close to the top of that, that main, and that's probably why they had so much dirt on it to begin with was they wanted sufficient cover over that pipe. Now there's nothing driving in that ditch, so there shouldn't be any, we shouldn't be worried about any heavy loads on it. But right now I'm just trying to get the intersection points figured out and what kind of elevations we're gonna need for clearances, so we know exactly what to do.
Well, as long as you get a foot of cover over that thirty-six inch or a foot and a half, you should be good.
Yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking, I mean, like I said, there's not heavy loads on it, we just wanna make sure that once we, once we, uh, disturb that soil, we can, we can get it, uh, rip rap so that we aren't worried about any large events scouring anything out.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, I'll be listening in.
Uh, any drainage, Shelly?
There is.
Yep.
Claims?
Yeah.
Farm drainage for two hundred and forty-nine dollars?
Stone move?
One second.
Motion second to approve drainage claim, any other discussion? Favor I?
I.
I oppose. Then we'll have our landowner meeting at seven o'clock. Let's move on to, uh, regular claims, you guys look at those?
You did.
Questions or concerns?
Question on that asphalt, I guess.
Yeah. Rich, this claim for Heartland asphalt, was that for the graft in the road? Still there?
Says he is. That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's got a, that LF, then whatever.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion second to approve the claims. All favor I?
I.
I oppose. Motion carry.
Have some payroll claims.
Motion to approve the payroll claim?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor I?
All right.
I, opposed. Uh, Melissa?
We have a Port Authority meeting this week and, um, a follow-up with Golden Shovel this week. And then next week, um, a follow-up with Avance, um, working on a press release right now. We have an employer, um, that is looking to utilize your service. I'm gonna need to locate about five different houses or apartments in the next three to four weeks. So if you guys could keep an ear open for anywhere between Northwood and Lake Mills, somewhere in that area, that'd be great.
Uh, two bedroom, three bedroom?
We don't know yet, at least two, I think.
Rental properties, I'm assuming for now?
Yep, and I believe the employer may or may not pay, um, the first couple of months.
Okay, cool.
We're working on the housing options right now, so.
Is that for tomorrow, is that Thursday?
Thursday, I'll work on the agenda today.
Uh, seven o'clock, right?
No, eight.
Oh, come on.
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock ended like a couple of years ago.
I just shouldn't get them down early and get out.
I need to make that a mo, get that on the agenda.
I put seven down anyway, though. That's Zoom though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, so, all right, so, any questions for Melissa?
No, not right now.
Any bites on our project out there, anybody come with, bringing a check yet?
Nope.
Any contacts?
Uh, no, no.
All right, cool, let us know if you get into any, doing good out there.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Petersburg, good morning.
Morning. My quick update, paving this week, supposed to be ready next showing up about nine o'clock this morning, main line today, tomorrow. And then work on intersections, intake, box outs, et cetera, the rest of the week, so. The whole concrete is scheduled to be done by the end of the week. Also been working with Heartland Power and the electric install. We talked about trying to use one trench for the streetlights and the primary electric. Um, waiting for them to get back to me. The likelihood of being able to trench the primary and backfill a foot and put the secondary for the street lighting over the top of it isn't sounding very promising, uh, just to get that leveled off good, to get a, to get something else in there. So I'm asked if we can put it right next to the primary, and you're supposed to be getting back to me on that, otherwise we may have to go on a separate trench with that. So.
That'd be good if we could, because this way then when it's located, ours is located with it, you know what I mean? Cause that's something we're gonna have to run into, I suppose, is we have a utility out there now that we're gonna have to try to locate in the future, right?
Correct. What, what do they use for like water now, Chris, people's, do you have a locator for anything?
I don't know, he's online, Chris, do you have a, a locator that you were able to hook to a cable with or wire with?
No, I do not have a locator.
Okay, is, cause all that out there now is probably plastic, is there wire buried with that, I'm assuming?
All the new stuff that was put in for the casino was plastic and it does have tracer wire with it.
Okay, but you guys, you guys don't actually own a tray or a locator of?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, yeah, Jason, then I guess see what they say and hopefully they'll let us in there and then it just kinda, we coke, right on their coattails for locates too, but.
Yep. Yep, that's all I had.
That's it?
That's it, any questions?
Want any fiber in with that stuff too?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, what about WCTA?
Yeah.
Like fiber?
Fiber.
They're going in, once the road's done, they're gonna put fiber in. Black Hills is burying at no cost, so the gas will be in and then Heartland is doing the electric, so all utilities will be available.
Yeah.
Very good.
When you start your business out there.
Yeah. Be fully equipped, Joel, pick a lot. Pick a lot.
Choice.
Any other questions for Jason, guys? Yeah, thanks, Jason, we'll be looking forward to seeing that paving next week. All right, resolution, twenty twenty dot oh seven dot two seven, interfund transfer. Oh, this hereby resolved, the Worth County Board of Supervisors, the county auditor is hereby directed to transfer a hundred fifty thousand from the general basic trust fund to the general fund, and a hundred fifty thousand from the rural services trust fund to the rural service basic fund. Basically to cover some expenses, I believe, right?
Yes, that's what you said, just, well, make sure.
Yeah, make sure.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Motion is second to approve the resolution, I will do a roll call vote, Abrams' time, maybe?
All right.
Stone, I, this motion will carry. I keep paying the bills.
Yeah.
All right, are there any reports? Nothing?
No.
Uh, we did our payroll eligibility and stuff already.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, fireworks permit?
We do have one.
Another one coming up too, I think.
Yeah, he called the other day.
He called too.
Yeah.
Cause I just got the email, Jackie got the email.
Yeah, and he called and it's, I think not till September, so he.
Yeah.
This is one for, uh, Van Miller Campground, South of Fertile.
Oh, this is one, this is one kinda borderline city.
Borderline city and county ass.
That's just a step.
Yeah, we just, it's right on the border, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion second to approve fireworks permit, any other discussion? All favor I?
I.
I oppose.
Is this the Dan Miller that used to have the fix this illusions?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
He has a shop there in Mason's.
Yeah, I think he's, he's up for it all.
His son was working.
His son's still there.
Okay, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
He'll come out in the country and do it and stuff.
Yeah, DC club, uh, fact, he's over all that Detroit, my town, which is about twice.
Okay.
First time was when he worked with, uh, Orbison's there at Fertile.
Oh, sure.
He, um, his boy, I know, does mobile.
Yeah, there's mobile.
Service work. Yeah. I think it's personally right on hand, but anyways, uh.
Yeah.
Where's the campground at then?
You know, I don't know. You must be right, so, just on the south edge, I'm not sure where they live, I know they got horses and other stuff, but then they, yeah, they got a campground there, so I don't. Not a hundred percent sure of that exact location. Uh, and Shelly, I guess send that to Dan too, would you please forward that on to him? Uh, department head discussion. Any department heads out there with questions or concerns?
Quiet group today, frigates, nobody's awake.
No, not even you?
No, no, I'm staying on the radar.
Oh, good.
Oh, I'm up and up, now we go.
Quarter's full, we're good there, so, she doesn't like to speak anyways. Uh, Sester's doing, we're doing a little rotating.
Yeah.
Um, like Judy and Cindy are gonna go do some field work, much field work to kind of separate them a little bit. Pretty Judy and Cindy, I guess. All right. Well, I guess it. We'll move on to supervisor weekly reports, Ken?
Just, uh, I remember, was on a conference with that Peter Gill.
Oh, yeah.
And going with, uh, the state, that four fifty seven, whatever it is that, and Jackie's working on that with, uh, with Peter, the state, I guess. Jenny, I got an email on that also, that.
Yeah.
Make sure all this all can. Our investments get handled properly, we'll have Peter still, there's some different options.
Yeah.
Stuff that's been, still being worked on, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, other than the paperwork stuff, which hopefully Peter can take care of most of that based off of what we already have there, I don't see why they couldn't take the stuff we have and just kinda.
Yeah.
Transfer the paperwork wise and then we just go through and maybe give it to the employees and say, double check this info?
Yeah.
And then get it back.
That would be. If it worked to that easy.
Transition, yeah, it sounds easy, but I don't yet.
Yeah, for them to, if they have to do it on themselves.
Yeah, but we'll see what, get everything ironed out there.
Yeah.
That it?
Yeah, well, then we, that off, then Friday, that off, with the, the intake altered, Thresh Avenue. Vine, Vine, Vine.
Think we got that figured out, so, make it work to utilize the, uh.
Existing stamp, like.
Yeah, the existing stamp, like, but utilize the reed line a little more and then keep water that would possibly overflow into, uh, Kirk Bart's land would actually come back and may, if it gets high water event, it may get out in the field, but then it stays, he has problems, it stays. And he's got a corner that's killed, just lose the crop, so now we'll get that to come back if there is that big of an, because hopefully if it's that big, the other intake will utilize and take on the extra waters.
Okay.
In theory, it all looks really good right now.
It's a good start.
Yeah, my name's.
Yeah, I had, I have a workforce development, we, uh, as a group, we finalized the shared by a bill agreement. Um, we sent it off to our county attorneys to kind of get approval, try to forward that on to you guys here if you wanna look at it. Jeff is supposed to be looking at it, which he's on vacation, I guess, uh, we were supposed to have it done and any input from the county attorneys, if they think there's any jargon that needs to be changed, we're supposed to be back by August. Any input from the county attorneys, if they think there's any jargon that needs to be changed, we're supposed to be back by August third so that we can. Get it all together and get it finalized. We're kind of coming up against the deadline, but. I sent it to Jeff, he wasn't able to open it up, um, on his phone, so, but he said he would get on the third and he gets back to look at it right away. It's, I, I don't really see why there'd be any changes. We've spent, geez, we've been on it for four months going around and around. It should be good for now to start. We can always go back and amend and change later, once we get it, once we adopt it, but, uh. So we had that, um, and I also met here Friday morning with a landowner down in the southwest part of the county. That has a private section, a ditch and tile that they want us to take over. They've had an agreement together forever.
There's, uh, they have a paper?
They got a paper granted, uh, you got copies of the paperwork, um. And, uh, it's, what fact is there, you know, but the youngest member is sixty-five years old and the oldest member has been doing. It's over eighty and they just don't want to deal with, it needs to be clean. There's three to four silts in there right now and they need to get it clean. They're not sure how they would do the billing and stuff, so they'd like to run it through the county. And actually, I think it's in DD seventy-two, the district, so it might be easier than you think. Be just set up as a lateral probably and, like I say, they've got the list of all the landowners and how they had assessed it in the past. That doesn't necessarily mean it'll be up to date spec, so I'm hoping, he has talked to Hudson, you know, Hudson kind of went around and around how Jim does, but, uh. He has talked to Hudson and, um, but I said we'll probably have to get the engineers involved and, uh. It's gonna be cleaned and then we'll probably have to bring it up. We'll, we'll do a reclassification at that time and it'll, everything will be good to go for him, so. They're, they're just, they're just ready to be done with it and let us take over, so, um, should be a good deal.
Well, I guess if they've got an agreement and it's, needs to be cleaned, maybe. They get that maintenance done, then it might be easier, you know, they go and pay for that, then that, then they'll be done, maybe easier to bring it into the others. That and what the other people in that district wanna.
Well, it'll only be the people that are on, you know, in that district.
If we're making a lateral.
It'll probably be a lateral way. I'm just kind of looking at it. We both sat there and looked at it and it is actually in the district, which is good. I mean, so it isn't like we're setting up a brand new district and it would be, and if they have the, uh, you know, the list of landowners that have been paying in. It'll only be deal if we had to annex some in or, you know, it wasn't enough. You know, there also could be a possibility. It dumps into a ditch now, I think, in the Goose Lake, like on Rahoots down there, I believe, right now. And I think that is actually a ditch. It looks like it says it was a main, so, you know, it might be a little common outlet deal they're going, that they're gonna want. They should be charging them anyways, so, um.
It should, I say, could open another can of worms.
Well, I don't think it's gonna open a bad can of worms.
Yeah, I know, I know what it, yeah, they could be hooked into paying an assessment of the other.
Which they could do to them right now if they wanted to. All they'd have to do is ask for, as it, you know. I, I, I think it'll all work out okay. I just, we'll let, we'll just take it, we'll probably be on the, hopefully on the agenda maybe next week. And we'll have to set up a landowners meeting, I assume, just in case there would be some objections, because like you said, is there any way this could be stopped? And I said, I, you know, as far as them actually wanting to clean it, no, it's repairs. So if they wanted to do it just as they are, they could clean it right now and no issues, but, you know, turning, turning over to us. I don't know if they could object to that either, according to code, you know, so, it, it needs to be done. So, too many private landowners and stuff, so.
I suppose you got a bunch, few of them don't want to pay, they don't want to pay.
Well, actually, there's at least three of them for sure and I don't know how many is totally involved. I didn't look at the whole list, but, uh, there's actually one that does live around here that's. He's got no problems with it. I think he's part of, he's, he custom farms this farm right now, so he's, he's all in favor of it. It, it just, it's in bad shape. So he needs work and, like I say, they don't want to deal with, you know, how do they, they say, how do we assess it to somebody? You know, we can't afford to be the bank either, which we don't want to be, but we, we are, but, you know, they don't want to be a bank. I mean, you know, it's landowners, they can't do that. It's just not the same as it was a hundred years ago or seven, but.
Twenty-five.
Or maybe in twenty-five, yeah. Too many people that don't live here, so. That's all I had.
Yeah. That was I had is the, Peter, Peter Hill, and then we, you know, or we'll. Check out there in Vine and Thresh and I was, that's pretty quiet last week, but I think it'll be this week, so. Okay, um, I, it wasn't on there. You guys see the report from Chris Myers for last month?
Yes.
Any questions on that or anything? Okay, so just in case there was any, you could ask him more here, but. Alright, and I don't know many coming up, but we're all gonna be attendants, so. Um, I guess we will recess our meeting until our ten o'clock landowner meeting. Um, DD twenty-two, let ten, so. Okay, I'm ending the meeting.